That does a great job. One of the things I'd like to kind of introduce is maybe a couple of alternatives. You know, it comes down to a lot of things. It comes down to price. Can we do the same job for the same money? Or can we do the same job for the less money? But we've been a couple of alternative options on there. They're the same active ingredients. You specified a four-eighth. We actually, you know, offered an alternative of what we call a four-four. We're talking about two ingredients. The ratio is kind of a... You know, we kind of... Where the marketing and the science diverge. You're talking about what's specified as a product that you can only get in one place. And, you know, laws of economics, you have reduced opportunities for source. You have a higher price. So we want to give you another option. Do the same job. It's doing that same job everywhere else that is working in Mississippi. City of Memphis and Shelby County in Tennessee. Quite a few others that I could offer as other options to... As references. Am I too loud or too quiet?
No, we're not on.
All right.
You're fine.
You're fine.
Aside from that, I included in our bid package a scientific study done by the Journal of American Mosquito Control Association. And what it does is it basically... They went through and they tested different ratio products, just like we're talking about comparing on the bid on a variety of different mosquito species commonly found in Mississippi as well. But basically what it did is it said, you do get a very, very small increase in efficacy, but you get a very significant increase in cost. So with that being said, is the juice worth the squeeze? So I offered that up. I'd be glad to leave a copy of it here. But first of all, we really appreciate the opportunity. Anything we can do to help you guys. As far as the support, you know, we currently do all of the same things that you're getting from your current vendor with all of our other customers. Calibration, training, CEU credit points, technical support in the field. Much to my wife's dismay, this rings at nine or 10 o'clock at night sometimes. But we could be here for you and help support you and, you know, maybe do it at 60, 70% of the cost that you're currently paying. So if we can help you, we'd love to. Thank you for the opportunity and look forward to seeing what we could do in the future with you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions maybe for... About who we are or what we do?
So are you located here?
I'm not. I'm actually located in Alabama, but I'm one of four state... Four representatives that work in the state of Mississippi. So I have a team of sales professionals and technical people that work in different regions of the state. I cover the entire state of Mississippi as the public health technical specialist. So...
What other areas do... What other counties or cities do you work nearby?
Well, actually, working with the city of Pearl. They started working with us this past summer. You know, Memphis, Shelby County is a progressive scientifically-based program of significant size. We've worked with them for many years. Mobile County, Alabama. It's a large countywide program, much similar to you guys. Counties across the Florida Panhandle, Baldwin County, Alabama. You know, as far as in Mississippi, there's others. But, you know, Mississippi's a lot of small towns and medium-sized towns. So I'm trying to look to grow our business and to, you know, make new inroads with new opportunities, so.
What's the name of your company?
Univar Environmental Sciences.
Okay.
One thing I did not include with our bid, though, and I think you're currently getting this from your current vendor already, but we also include a... We have about a $15 million liability package that we cover ourselves, our people, and that ties in with our chemical liability with our customers as well. So, you know, we're not somebody who's making it in our garage, per se. Univar's actually a multinational company, the largest chemical distribution company in the world.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I think the sheriff wants to say something, Jerry.
The what?
I think the sheriff wants to share.
I was going to make y'all wear something. Yesterday, you know, I guess I don't know how many months ago that y'all, you know, we got together and I sort of over the storm room, over the security at the livestock pavilion. Well, since that time, I've always had a deputy there any time they had any kind of event. Well, this weekend, they had a barrel horse race from Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Well, yet last night about eight o'clock, Deputy Daniel Strickland was down there and he started hearing people crying for help. And he ran over to where they were at. There was a nine-year-old girl wasn't breathing. She was... Had something stuck in her throat. And he's able to do the Heimlich maneuver on her, dislodge the bottle cap out of her throat and saved her life last night at the livestock pavilion. Where if we didn't have anybody there, you know, I know the ambulance would have been close, but I wouldn't have been close enough to save her or not.
She had a bottle cap?
A bottle cap. She was choking on the bottle cap. He's able to dislodge it and she's back on a horse ride. She had to go to the hospital.
Tell him thank you very much.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing that. Okay. Next, we have old business approved.
Motion to approve the February 17th, February 26th, and March 2nd, 2015 minutes.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next, consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take item 1D from the consent agenda to put on the main agenda. We just need to clarify all that, some verbiage.
All right, on what now?
1D. At Greenfield Station.
So are you making a motion to approve the consent agenda, taking that one off?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay. Motion approved, consent agenda with the exemption of...
Except for 1D.
1D. A motion by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now, you want to add this to the agenda?
Yes.
Or just clarify?
I need to add this to the agenda, I guess, and let's kind of clarify. Okay. I want to make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
All right, have a motion to add item D to the agenda by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
For clarity, I'd like to bring in Craig Slay and just clarify this to get the verbiage right.
Gentlemen, if y'all will quickly at page from numero five, that's one, for item D, you'll see a letter from Mr. Tim Weaver, who is the developer of Greenfield Station. The second sentence... And by the way, the purpose for this is that there are standing letters of credit protecting the wearing surface applications for a number of streets in Greenfield Station. This is a multi-phase development on Highway 468. And as that development has progressed, there have been different phases that come online. There are a number of streets that are already in place. Mr. Weaver is prepared to start developing some additional phases and has requested, and Mr. Buster and his guys have looked at the request, to go ahead and install the wearing surface in certain areas while there is continuing construction going on. And so the concern that was raised, obviously, is that as you have additional construction that is going to be taking place, but you put the wearing surface down, you have the potential that that wearing surface is going to be damaged over time during the remaining construction. So we've worked it out with Mr. Weaver so that the county, I believe, as legal counsel of the county, is protected through a process that allows Mr. Weaver to guarantee, warrant personally and through the company, the condition of the wearing surfaces on the individual streets that are going to have a wearing surface applied in exchange for a release of the letter of credit for the specific phases where those streets are located. What happened was Mr. Weaver carefully mentioned the street that he is referring to is Greenfield Station and then Greenfield Ridge, Parks 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E. I looked right over the Greenfield Station reference, which is in Park One, and went straight to the other identified subdivision phases that are listed there. So Park One got left off of the consent agenda item. We need to clarify that, that Mr. Weaver is actually warranting the street that is called...
Mr. Weaver has Greenfield Station?
Greenfield St... He's warranting that street for the two-year period. Greenfield Ridge, I believe? Part 1A is also a two-year warranty. And then the additional streets in 1B through 1E would be one-year warranties, okay? So that's... That was the only clarification. Mr. Buster's looked at it. I've looked at it. We're satisfied with this arrangement. What you'll be doing is authorizing me as legal counsel to release the letter of credit back to the bank for what you see here in addition to the street called Greenfield Station.
Right.
So how long is it going to take to fill out the rest of the subdivision?
Well, we've got an east side and a west side. And the west side has nothing to do with these streets. The east side, hopefully another two years and we're pretty much through. With the east side that would affect these streets.
So the west side will be coming through a different access?
Well, the main road will not. Greenfield Station, probably five years or so. Because the way your ordinance reads is that three years... It reads that once a subdivided park is 80% complete, that we are allowed to put that wearing surface on. And then it also reads that there's a three-year clause in here about...
Pretty much regardless of the percentage. If it's been three years, you put the wearing surface down.
That main road has been down five or six years, and we have no failure in it at this time, and we've been using it since 2010. But the problem is, or not a problem, the thing is, we're carrying about $350,000 worth of letters of credit right now. And if we don't begin to put some of these wearing surfaces on, that continues to grow. And as you guys know, we've put up 150%. So when you're talking 300,000, that means 100,000 of it is money available to us as the developer. And believe it or not, we have not taken a penny out of that subdivision in four years. We've put it all back into infrastructure improvements. We're getting ready to do another pool. So we've continued to put our money back into it. But we're just requesting that you guys allow us to put that wearing surface on now.
With a two-year warranty on it?
I just have a question. Mr. Weaver, how do you plan to keep the construction traffic off of the wearing surfaces that you put in place?
The main street, Greenfield Station, we will not be able to keep the construction traffic off of it. We feel like, you know, we've put 120 homes out there thus far. We've given you some tax base out there to be able to, you know, to do some things out there. And as I said, the main road is five years... Well, it's older than that. I don't know how old it is because Savickel actually put that road in. But we've been utilizing that road since 2010, and we've had no failure on it whatsoever. So it's got a very strong base. And whether, I don't know if you know it or not, the wearing surface is actually stronger... The inch-and-a-half wearing surface is actually stronger than the five inches of base that we have down there now because it seals it off. It's a different asphalt. And Mr. Parker, and therefore...
I wouldn't say it was better, no, but it's...
It seals it. Right. It seals it so that the water and things can't get in. And that's typically, you know, what helps a road fail.
But my question is, when you go in Greenfield Station and you get to the circle, I can understand the construction traffic to the west would be... Would not affect what you're planning on putting the surface on, which is to the east in the completed part. But last time I was out there, there was another phase going on on the east side behind the houses that are already there.
And we're warranting Part 1A street for two years, which is the street that would carry you to where the homes are being built on the east side.
That should carry out that... Should carry out that time limit?
Time period. We're swapping security. The letter of credit stands as security for the wearing surface application. Mr. Weaver and his company are agreeing to simply stand as security for the wearing surface application to release the letter of credit.
Mr. Parker, you have anything you ought to... We ought to know or add?
No, I've gone over that with Mr. Weaver, your attorney. Not something I'm crazy about, because there's houses that you can't get up without, but there are alternatives. The only other alternative that I talked to Mr. Weaver about, to build a construction entrance off of Greenfield Circle.
Greenfield Circle.
Greenfield Circle.
Right.
And he indicated to me that that is not capable at all.
Okay. Well, what you've got out there, Greenfield Circle, is not... It's very narrow, as we know. And that's kind of a concern of mine, and I've also talked to several people that live out there. So I know that no matter what, we'd be trading one for another, and I'm sure that we'd probably be tearing that road up even more so.
Would, yes.
So it'd probably cost us more to actually do something like that than it would be to get a two-year warranty on this.
I rather play stronger than your Greenfield Circle.
Right.
So you're going to have a two-year warranty?
Yes, sir.
Two-year?
Two-year warranty on the main street, which is Greenfield Station, and two-year warranty on Greenfield Part 1A, which is the street that carries you into the construction on the east.
Okay. Do you think... Do you think the... In that two-year period, I mean, I know it's hard for you to say, but do you feel like you'd notice that we've built out in that period?
We believe the economy always feels different. We believe that on the east side, we will be in a situation to where we will not have to utilize the street that's Greenfield Ridge 1A. Our intention is, as we head north, to head back to the west and to build from the circle north a little bit to get us so that we can bring the traffic out on the Greenfield Station again.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Does it have to be all-inclusive? I mean, if he has this phase going on on the east side, and if 1A is the road that takes you back to that development, could we do every road except that one?
I think there is one letter of credit. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, there are multiple letters of credit, but that street is open three years old also. But, you know, and I'm not trying to... I've got to work with this for 10 more years, so I'm certainly not trying to give you a hard time this morning. But, you know, at some point, we've built this county some tax base. And not only, you know, I understand you're not making any money for, you know, off of a rooftop because you've got to give them garbage and police and all those things, but they also bring sales tax dollars into your county by spending money in those areas. So we believe at some point that, you know, the county... These are the county's roads. That your people, your citizens, are utilizing them to be able to spend their money to your street. And we've passed three years on the Part 1A, and we just believe that we're within our right to pay. And we've agreed to give them this warranty, which Parker may not have.
The only problem... The only problem with that, though, we have that in a lot of cases, but if the road fails, and it may not, fails, then we're, you know, within that... After that two-year period, and I think the two-year probably is a... From what you're saying, may cover it. And I was trying to get some input from legal counsel as well as our engineer, but we're going to be the ones responsible then for fixing it.
Well, as additional development comes online, this board will have an opportunity because those are going to have to be approved. This board will have an opportunity to evaluate whether or not what we've been told by the developer as it relates to how the conditions of those roads is going to hold up, whether that's happening. And as a byproduct of granting additional opportunities for development, there may need to be an extension of a two-year warranty for some period of time. There are opportunities to police this as we go.
Well, that's... Okay, that's a good point. So you... It could be an extension, needed extension, if the development is not to the point. Okay.
Obviously, Mr. Weaver would have to agree to that. There would be some discussion and negotiation about that, but my experience is that Mr. Weaver's always been reasonable and has allowed us to work with him, and we've worked together to try to get things accomplished, and it's worked up to this point.
Okay.
Another way to look at it also, though, is we utilize Highway 468 to disrupt subdivision. That's the county road. So we're not tearing it up.
Access state.
State highway.
Right.
It gets attention.
It does.
And that's not to say that if we have a pothole and Mr. Parker calls in two and a half years and says, "Tim, could you go fix that for me?", that's not to say I'm not going to tell him that. It's not to say I'm going to tell him, "Yes." But it's not... But Mr. Parker knows.
Sound like a lobe.
And we want to do things that give you a good feeling about working with us.
Yes, best thing, not telling them no. As the attorney said, in the future, we'll have a new set of proposals for you, which we don't have now. We're kind of locked into the situation. And we're just trying to make the best out of it that we can. I have visited with him numerous times. We've had some pretty good discussions, disagreements, but he hasn't done a good sitting with it. So at this time, I don't have a problem with what's being proposed here. And we will monitor. And if a problem comes up, he's going to have another phase that will go in and blow up that.
True.
Well, that's only going to apply, though, if you don't start the other phase within the two-year period.
If we don't get the access... Let me clarify, just so there's never a misunderstanding. Greenfield Station, which is the main road in there from 468 to Roundabout we're talking about, we're probably going to be on it five years. The remainder of it, we will should be offered in two years, given the economy and, you know, those things.
And that's the road that gives me concern, actually, because...
It's actually the best road out there.
It's really against policy, I think.
If it had zero failure on that road, it was in for long...
Well, I think our own policy or ordinance requires us to approve it anyway, so... Right.
Is this... So this is going against the policy?
No, this is... They are eligible, because of the three-year period, they are eligible to make the request for the release of the LOC. The issue that we have is that we know, even though the three-year period is in place, because that's what our development ordinance says.
Okay.
That's the answer. We know that we're going to have... Because he's eligible, this is, in my opinion, this is a good workaround for the fact that he can ask for the release on Greenfield Station right now, but we know that there's at least five more years of development on that street. At least this way, we're going to get at least an additional two-year warranty on the condition of the road.
Yeah.
Probably longer than that, if necessary, assuming Mr. Weaver will agree. Okay? Probably longer than that.
Okay. And that was a kind of a... The concern I had when he first came to me, Mr. Tim came to me, I said, you know, when I talked to Craig and Buster both, they recommended, and I like the idea about the two-year warranty because, you know, it does fit the policy, but at least he's willing to give and take.
All right, well, then what's the...
So you're going to make your motion adding the Greenfield Station road in?
Correct. That's where I wanted to bring it off because it was not in the... It was not in the original on the consent. I want to make sure to get the revisions and all the verbiage correct.
In addition to phases 1A through E, we need to add Greenfield Station, the road itself.
Right.
That is now subject to an additional two-year warranty by the developer.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Weaver, are there other phases to the east besides the one that's going in now?
Yes, sir. We're getting ready to do H and I. We've got the engineering going on it. And there will be continued development east, but our... The way our plan lays is that as we get H and I, we will go back to the west. And at some point, we plan to continue the circle far enough to pick up that next street, and then that would become our construction.
They won't be going through phases 1A, B, C, D, or E to get to H and I? They'll go up Greenfield Station beyond the Roundabout and across?
After H and I.
After, yeah.
That's why we're going through part...
Whole alphabet.
Got you.
Right.
Got the whole alphabet.
I told you I was a big developer.
Yes.
Okay.
So I made a motion to approve this with the revisions that... Between Greenfield Station and our attorney to get the verbiage correct in this.
It's actually correct in the letter. It wasn't correct on the agenda item. So we're reforming the agenda item to include Greenfield Station as an additional phase of development, the road itself, Greenfield Station, subject to the two-year warranty.
Correct. Make that motion.
All right. Most from Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Bishop. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? I mean, all opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Judy Fortenberry. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. We have two parcels. They're land sale parcels that we need to void and refund the tax purchaser. One is a 2014 tax sale for PIN number 30084 and a 2013 tax sale for PIN number 4676. These properties matured to the state.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Jordan Sweet. John Sullivan.
Glad to have you back. Yeah, I'm glad to be back. Just one item petition to change the assessment on 2014 real and personal property assessment.
Most approved. I didn't know you left.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Bridget... Mrs. Bridget Herring. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have the bid opening this morning for the mosquito control products and services.
Looks like we need a promo.
I think I'm making too much of a...
I'm just thinking about how much money she has to come in.
The first bid this morning is from ADACCO. For product number one, they bid $33.89 per gallon. Product two, $53.19 per gallon. Product number three, $18.25 per gallon. Product four, $1,124.20 per case. Product number five, Larvicide. Not sure. There's three different prices here. Not to say what they are. The first one, they... For a four-star, 45, they bid the price per case is $243.65. Four-star, 90, $496... $496.09 per case. Four-star, 180, $636.94.
Forty-five, 90, 80 is...
The days, okay.
Different days. That's the days that it'll last in the...
So you actually got three prices on that?
No. It's based on which one, if you want to buy a $45... I mean, a 45-day Larvicide, the second one, the price I gave you was for a 90-day one, and I guess the last one's 180, the last...
And it was what, six what?
Six thirty-six ninety-four.
Okay. All right.
And product number six, the Larvicide oil, for a 55-gallon drum, is quoted as $9.86 per gallon. If we buy it by the $5... A $5-gallon, I don't know why I keep saying dollar. It's $11 a gallon. This bid is from Univar. Product number one, it's $17.97 per gallon. Product number two, $26.97 per gallon. Product three, $17.97 per gallon. Product four, $1,124.20 per case. No bid for product number five. Product number six, $9.67... Product number six, $9.67 per gallon. Recommend that those be taken under advisement.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, okay. Most takes is under advisement of Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The second, when you opened, who, what was there?
Univar.
Univar.
Okay. But Mr. Powers was, she's representing him.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll see y'all tonight, there, sir.
Yeah, 6 o'clock. Okay, Mr. Parker, you can start your way to the podium. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, gentlemen. Person on the item that I have on the agenda today is on our old Highway 49 drainage improvement. I'm recommending approval of pay request number eight to Thornton Construction Company, Incorporated, in amount of $15,533.26, and authority to issue that check.
So moved.
Most approved by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Well, this be the time to discuss retaining the old funding. Would this be the time to discuss retaining the old funding?
That'd be fine, yeah. Whether you want to put it under old business, only under additional business.
All right, we'll come back to that.
I mean, it doesn't matter, he's already up there. You want to bring him now? Let's just go and do it right. Wait, no, look at the crowd. Let's, let's bring it up to additional business. All right. Yeah, make a note, bring that up, Walter. Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Under my section, items A and B, we're going to set a couple of public hearings. Both of these will be set at the same time, so I would propose a combination motion to set a public hearing on April 2, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. for both the Chase Home Finance, LLC nuisance property, 184 Russell Street, District 1, and the Harold Bigsby, I'm sorry, Bigby, 14, 184A, Russell Street, District 1. These are nuisance considerations. I'd ask for that to be one motion.
Motion approved.
I'm looking at the motion, set to a public hearing, break for second. A and B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, set to a public hearing, second by Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, the next item under my section of the agenda, item C, is the public hearing for the Richard Smith rezoning with conditional use at 449 Williams Road, District 1. Mr. Smith is requesting to rezone a 9.19 acre parcel at 449 Williams Road from its current zoning designation of RE1A to C2 commercial. If the zoning change is approved, he is requesting a conditional use permit for construction of a 2,508 square foot convenience store. The building will be constructed of insulated concrete block. This property is less than a mile from the city limits of the city of Florence. Again, it's a District 1 property. At this time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Richard Smith rezoning request. Anyone? You'll come forward, please, state your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Excuse me. My name is Tony McLean, and I live at 466 Williams Road in Florence. I'm not necessarily the spokesman for this group, however, I have spoken with many and numerous neighbors in the area, and I prepared a statement that I'd like to present. I would like to thank, first of all, the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity for the residents of the William Road area to force our opposition and concerns about the requested rezoning parcel, for parcel number F498. The partial in the rezoning request is currently zoned residential, RE1A. The current zoning reflects the land uses and character of the area. We residents are opposed to it being rezoned to C2 general, commercial, for the following reasons. First of all, the request, we are concerned, may not, or does not meet the legal litmus test for rezoning. A, there was no mistake in the orig, in the original zoning. B, the land use character of the area has not changed from residential and agriculture to commercial, and there is not a public need for the rezoning. A rezoning at this location will most certainly change the dynamics of the area and negatively impact our quality of life. There will be commercial use next door and, and directly in front of places that we call home. We are concerned about the additional noise, loitering, trash, and the crime that may be introduced to our community. A rezoning would allow for all the land uses that are permitted by right in the P1 and C2. I understand that there is a conditional use request, or it's included in there. However, it should be noted that the use that causes me the most concern is the one that is not defined, more specific, more specifically, those other uses that someone else will have the option of deciding that they are of the same nature and character as the permitted uses. William Road serves both residential and commercial uses. However, the road at this location does not seem to be adequate enough to handle the wear and tear of large commercial vehicles in and out on a consistent basis. There is simply not enough traffic in this area to even support a commercial venture. We respectfully request that you take our concerns into consideration and deny the request for the rezoning. And finally, we filed a petition that was circulated and signed by many concerned residents in the neighborhood who oppose the rezoning request. Many had to work and are not able to be here, but are represented by their signatories on the position, on, on the petition. There are many here, and I'd like for them to at least stand and be recognized and be allowed, if permissible, to make any short statements that they'd like to. Thank you, and is that permissible, if they have it?
Well, yeah, the only, yeah, I mean, I don't, we can start having a couple come forth. What, if it becomes kind of generic, as far as each one kind of has the same complaint or same issue, then we'd want to limit it, obviously, because that's what happens a lot of times, same, everybody says the same thing. So, yes, I would entertain some to come forth, yes.
President, may I, is there anyone, based on Mr. McLean's statement, which is very thorough, is there anyone here that's standing that would like to add to what he's already said? I'd like to, okay, come forward, please.
Come, yeah.
Give your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Hugh Robinson, and my address is 140 HT Fraser Road, which is right off Williams Road, and the parcel that we talked about is very close to our neighborhood. One thing I want to do is, we have a few more petitions that were signed and get a chance to turn in on Friday, I'd like to add that to the record. Plus, I'd like to know, maybe Ricky will tell us later, but what kind of impact, did anybody do kind of, some kind of survey or study saying, what kind of impact would that affect us if you guys approved this, and as far as related to property value, taxes increase, or crime in that area? I'd like to, like those three things to be addressed before we approve this measure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Roberta Graves, and my property would be joining his on the backside, okay? It's just going to access more trouble with four-wheelers and everything on my property. Being that they have access to a commercial store right there, you have two little women living there, that the property borders, and we do not want a commercial building there to have more trouble in that area. Mary Boggs' property borders it also.
North side.
Yes.
Yeah.
And mine is the backside of his property.
Yours, okay, okay, on kind of the west side.
Yes.
Yeah.
And...
Are you having problems with four-wheelers and things now?
Well, yes, with the power lines.
Yeah, well, that's...
And then they, you know, come down and, you know, come by the houses and everything. And, you know, it's, it's just, just give me more problems with people coming on the property.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, it's like, maybe if something, with it just being open and now it's just kind of open property, it kind of, it does invite just people unwanted or, or people to use it that don't realize. So, I mean, I think that, that is helping create some of your problem now, there's just some piece of land unused, yeah.
And my property is, you know, residential, and I tried to sell a trailer spot, that is a trailer spot, and it has been for years, for a lady to put a double-wide in there, and it was refused by the county because no trailers are allowed to be put in there. So, why should we let a store come in?
Well, this is the same area.
If we can't have a...
What?
Was that the young lady that came with the child that was trying to get it?
No. When?
Couple of years ago.
No, that hell's a gunner.
Okay.
No, that was a gunner. I'm not, I'm not familiar with someone not being able to put a home in there. I mean, was this recently?
Well, this was last year.
It depends also on how big the parcel is, if there's any other dwellings on it, on the property.
Well, that, that's kind of a different deal that I, you know, as far as looking into it, to compare apples to apples.
Right. I mean, it's, you know, agriculture across the street, and it's residential on this side.
Right. But, I mean, as far as your, the manufactured home issue, that would be something else that I, I don't know why, what the reason was. That's something that our building department would have to explain to us, the difference there. I really couldn't elaborate on that or understand on that.
Well, I'm just totally against it.
All right, all right, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Five thirty-one and five twenty-nine.
Okay.
Is that Williams Road?
Williams Road.
Williams Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
From the opponent side?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, may I, Mr. Smith, I believe is here. Yeah. Maybe it would be appropriate to hear from Mr. Smith.
Please.
And he may be able to address some of the concerns that have been raised.
Please do.
Mr. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. For address purposes, I'm Rick Smith. My address is 958 Highway 469 North Pearl, property located at 449 Williams Road in Florence. And respectfully to Mr. McLean and everyone else that has spoke, I'm going to try to first address their questions before I tell you why it is needed.
Can you all hear in the back? Okay.
First, I'm going back to Ms. Graves, since she was the last one that spoke. The backside of the property, there is a problem with four-wheelers. There is a definite problem. I've posted, posted signs all, all the way around my property, and I have took, put up trail cameras to see who's coming in. Right before I purchased the property, there was excess dumping in the area. So, it is, the dumping has stopped. The four-wheelers have stopped to a point, and with me now blocking off the roads they cannot access to, they weren't really four-wheelers, four-by-four trucks, a lot of it was. So, I've taken steps to keep peoples off my property, so that will help her property. What kind of impact of taxes, value, and crime in the area? I don't see nobody's taxes going up but mine's, because the rest of it would still be residential. What kind of value the property value will have, it will not decrease the property value because where the, where the business will be located, it's on nine acres. It's not like it's jammed back up to somebody's house. I've heard statements saying that people walking out their door looking at the store. But when I look outside of the store projected location, a couple of houses I can't even see. And one of them, you have to have a pair of binoculars to even see it. When we look at the crime in the area, now the sheriff is sitting here, it's more calls down Roland Hills and down McCullough-McLean Road for problems. It's not me bringing crime, the crime is already there. And I see people fighting prosperity versus walking down the street and fighting drugs. So, if we put all our energy into fighting prosperity, the crime going to continue to escalate. So, now, back to what we're here for. I purchased this land some, three years ago with all intentions of putting a convenience store there. As I looked around the area with over 500 residents right in that area, the closest convenience store is either at Florence or at the corner of 469 and Monterey Road. So, is there a need? Yes. There's a lot of people that have asked me, when I'm, when am I going to open the store? Now, I bring this part forward. We will not sell beer. It will be a grocery store and a restaurant combined. There are no beer sales to be made. One of the proponents has said that people will be loitering. We have agreed to put up a fence where it closes off the property at closing time. We, one of the property owners said there'd be too many lights in the area. We have agreed to put up low illumination lights. We have to have some light for security. Now, my question is this. I know most of the people behind me, either directly or indirectly, and whether the board approves the store or not, I'm going to still love them. But the question comes down to business practice. Williams Road is zoned REA. McCullough-McLean Road is zoned agriculture. So, now we come to a point of which side of the road are you on? We already have one business in the area. So, is it bringing down your property value? Where I see where this one particular commercial business, there was a $350,000 house went up, so did that bring down the value? A half a mile from it, there's another house being built, looked like about a $200,000 house. So, bringing down property value is not there. But my question is, if we have all... But my question is, if we have already have a commercial building in the area, how is it zoned? Where is it zoned? I understand the grandfather clause came in, in two thousand and four. Also, I mean, the rezoning took place in two thousand and four. However, if you change the complexity of your business, or if you close your business for at least six months and reopen it, then you got to come back before the board file all your necessary paperwork for them to approve the business reopening.
That's not true. If it's the same type business, you don't have to do that.
If it's the same type, but it's not the same type. But if it's closed, now the attorney said, yes.
Ms. Re- can I, can I stop?
If it shuts down and closes and is not operational for six months, then you lose the grandfather status. You have to come in and apply. Or if the use changes, if it was grandfathered in as a barber shop and now it's a restaurant, or they want to do a restaurant, if the use changes, then you have to come back as well. You can only continue on as long as you stay open with the exact same use as when some, you know, as you had before zoning was adopted.
So now my question is, I'm taking the proper steps. We will bring in more taxes. We're servicing the neighborhood. It's not like we pulling in peoples outside. Brother Hughes said that, uh, brother McLenn said that it'll be excessive commercial vehicles. It's no different than the log trucks and the dirt trucks that run on the roads every day. If the, if the pavement wasn't there to hold up these trucks, we wouldn't allow them on there anyway. But I'm creating jobs, I'm bringing in more taxes, and I'm servicing the community. I grew up partially a quarter of a mile from McLenn, McCullough and Williams Road. That's why I know everybody in the community. It's not like I'm being implanted in and don't know the complexity of the community. And also, I did not want to do this, but I was compelled to. I do not want to tear up the community. It was not my position to go out and get a petition signed in favor of the convenience store. Not only do you separate people's household, but you separate people's in the household. And the petition that they drew up caused me to knock on doors yesterday. And I did present to Ms. Renee a petition this morning, asking for the approval of the store. Any question to me?
How many, on that petition, can I ask how many did you end up with, with Ms. Renee?
I think it was seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight?
Yes, sir.
In favor of? Thank you, sir.
And down the road from you, I hadn't think about it, is, is a gentleman has heavy equipment.
Yes.
I wasn't, I forgot about that.
Yes.
That obviously travels the road.
Right.
Which is within how far?
Huh?
How far now?
Less than a mile.
Less than a mile?
Probably, yeah. Five hundred yards. Well, I guess we've gotten something else now that's kind of entered into the picture. And I think I might need the attorney to address some of that. I'm not sure, two questions about the zoning of the, our, our business.
Yes.
Now this come to light, and it was agriculture and the way the zoning changes and the way the permits and all. I don't know if this is the proper time to, how that needs to be addressed or what. We've kind of got a little issue here of...
Well, let me briefly address where we stand.
Please.
From what I, and again, this is all subject to being clarified and verified as well. But I, I believe what we've heard is that the existing commercial business is actually located on property that is zoned agriculture. Is that right?
Yes.
Sorry?
Oh, yes.
Okay. The existing business is on A1, or, or A2, it's agriculture regardless. Under our zoning, that, a, a commercial business of that type, which I understand, I assume, is like a convenience store? I'm sorry? A restaurant, okay. That would be permitted? In other words, that would not require a rezoning of that property. But it does require conditional use. They would have to have a permit with use, with conditions that are applied to it. My understanding is apparently that that has not happened. And that while the use was permitted at the time zoning came in, if the business did in fact close for that requisite period, or if it materially changed during that period of time since oh-four, the grandfather status is lost. And any reopening, reoperation would have to be subject to a conditional use request that requires obviously coming and filing an application and paying the fee and going through the permitting process. So that would not be proper for that business to be ongoing without a conditional use permit in place if those facts are accurate. We don't know if those facts are accurate because we're just hearing about them today. And so we haven't had time to address whether or not that is the case. I think it's a bit of a side issue to what we're, what we are looking at today. However, it is important because it is that area, it's that neighborhood. And so the issue of whether or not there has been a material change in the character of the neighborhood, the fact that there is an existing business within close proximity would be one of those factors that this board could look at to determine that there is a, an adequate change in the neighborhood to justify the rezoning request that is in fact before you. Okay, so that's just one of the elements, but it would be evidence. Again, we don't know the specifics on the existing business because we just found out about it. So we would need to do some more research and some further study to know exactly where we stand on that issue.
To be fair with...
But I think it's, clearly, clearly it is one of these without the other under consideration, without all of the facts. It's, it's difficult, it's a difficult decision to make. You may make a decision based on facts that you thought you understood, but they're different once we have an opportunity to actually give a look. So I would suggest we may want to take some time to look at that. Mr. President, one other issue as well is the public need. I think you heard some evidence that there are residents in the community who believe that this is a need for that community. That is in fact one of the elements that you are to look at for a rezoning request. And so I'd call your attention to that. If you do have a petition that refers to the fact that it is a needed business, then that would be something you'll want to pay attention to. Mr. McLenn is correct that one of the other elements that justifies a rezoning is if there is a clear mistake in the initial zoning. And in this particular case, I just want to make this point, that does not appear to be the case in either respect, both for the existing business being in agriculture and this business being proposed for what is now a residential classification. There, there was not a mistake in the zoning. So that will not be one of the elements that has to be reviewed. Any other questions?
Is there, um, I hate we don't have the screen set up. We, I think, I don't know that some of the people in the, out here have actually seen the preliminary look of what was proposed. But I believe he's gone through everything and has everything as far as the, I mean, everything that you needed to approve what was, what he's building, correct?
We have, other than, you know, if the rezoning is approved, the conditional use would have to have some big approved contention if that's what you chose to do upon finalization of Mr. Parker's review of that, um, route.
And there may be, we, we briefly touched on it. Mr. Smith gave you some indication that he's already working on some conditions, the fence, the low level lighting, I think you referred to. There may be some attention needed to be, needed to be given to hours of operation. There may be something to do with aesthetics that the board wants to look at. So there are a number of other considerations. The first, obviously, this is a two-part process. We've got to rezone the property first because it doesn't matter about conditions if, if you don't rezone. So that needs to be considered first if the board's prepared to do that. At that time then, conditions can be considered.
How close is the closest house? Residents?
No, just Florence is what, three miles?
Less than a mile.
Florence? The store in Florence is probably a, a...
You know, the closest house to this?
Oh, house? I don't know, um, well, those are apartments, I think, aren't they across the street?
It's a couple hundred feet.
Right.
But it is a house.
Yeah.
That house and then it's our house, so we're talking about...
It's a couple hundred feet of the first house.
Then one house in between and then a convenience.
Right.
So you're, you're not talking, you're not talking along this, along the... Two miles into Florence.
Start over, your name and address.
My name is Melody Buchanan. My address is three ninety-five Williams Road. I was just pointing out that you're really residential out there, you're rural. You're talking about a house, my house, my house, a house and a convenience store. What I was gonna point out in addition to that is if you drive two miles toward Flo- Florence, you've got four convenience stores. If you drive two miles toward Monterey, you have one convenience store. Five convenience stores, two miles either way. The need there, you're looking at the demographics. Who's gonna drive down there besides just us to shop there? Now, if the majority of us are opposed to that, your demographic drops even more because we're not gonna patronize the business. But now that would be his concern.
Right.
You know, whether he can make that work or not.
Right.
But, you know, the need is questioned. You can't walk on the road, there's no sidewalks, there's too much traffic. So you're gonna drive a half mile or you're gonna drive two miles either way?
Yeah. And you're right, that would be his, I guess, his concern, the highest support. Come forward, please.
I'm looking at my plans and based on the location...
I wish we had that on the screen.
Right. But based on the location, the property may have joints. We decide, and both lots of vacant on my side that, when I checked yesterday, where we have the, the two acres cut out, it's gonna be approximately three hundred feet from either one of the, my property ends, not their vacant lot in their house. So, you know, this is not a, this is a free, free world. You shop where you want to. You know, some people pass the stores in Florence to go to Ritz, so...
Well, honestly, it's always surprised me how many stores can be supported sometimes in some little areas.
Thank you.
Honestly, but that'd be, it's like say something that obviously is your, your concern and what you would have to deal with. Yeah, go ahead. This'll be the last one.
I'd like to take one minute.
Sure.
First of all, as, as we look at the Lincoln County Future Land Use Plan, we see a sea of green and blue in that particular area. And we are looking at the, the transplant of a business right in the middle of that area, where our community is. And that causes a problem. Now, there are some other little specks in here, but those are old businesses that were probably brought in when there wasn't even zoning, a zoning requirement. And I'd like to say, we are not necessarily concerned. And we understand that, um, that there won't, this won't increase our taxes. There's, there's not a real concern about that property value. We're not concerned about that, so to speak.
Thank you.
But as, as the lady indicated, our neighbor indicated, we are from five to seven minutes away from any commercial need that we have. And to change our zoning to, to accommodate a convenience store right in the middle of our neighborhood, it just seems to be quite a bit much. Now, I'm seeing this because I have, I owned a convenience store in Jackson for nineteen years, a successful convenience store. And I know what it brings. I know what you have to have in order to make it a success. And I know that a convenience store is not gonna function without gas, beer and cigarettes. There's just no way. Of course, again, that, that is his, you know, concern. But we are, we're concerned that if we get this rezoned and the business fails, then we're looking at a sore eye in the community. There's no, uh, we don't feel that there's any real loyalty to our community. And we, we are just very concerned about there being a vacant business there or, or building as a result of this, or selling out to something else that may come forward that might, might even be worse. We just don't feel like this is the time that, that we need. There's, there's no real need for this based on what we have. Now, I know we have over almost two hundred people who signed this petition. Of course, we turned in some, but we were told that Friday would be the last day or we didn't, we couldn't turn any in after Friday, so we didn't. We have some others. But we feel like you have enough information to consider what we have. And we just, you know, pray that you see the right side of it and, and we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just to wrap it up again, I want to put a bow on it so that you know kind of where you stand. There's a two-part process here. One is rezoning. That's a necessary first part of the process. You gotta clear that hurdle. No need to go into conditions unless you clear hurdle one on rezoning. So that would be the stages of the process going forward. You've heard from this particular setting, you've got information now before you. If you're prepared to move forward with a decision, you're welcome to do so now. But it'll be a, a question on the rezoning first, and then we would move into conditions.
Well, what would you, what do you suggest though with this, um, as far as...
You know, whenever we had our planning commission meeting, we didn't have pictures or anything and there wasn't any opposition to it at that point in time. I don't really feel comfortable voting on this today without actually looking at the area and knowing what we're voting on personally.
Well, and that's what I was actually gonna, I agree with you. But other thing I will add to that is I would, you know, you've drawn a question now to a, whether something, whether it's zoned, whether it has the right permits, whatever, of an existing business that's there. And I know that kind of is not the same, but yet one's gonna, has triggered the other.
Potentially could impact the other.
It has, and so at this time, I, I mean, I would rather wait until we can get, like I say, you'll be able to see some things, plus see what we, how we can work things out and what becomes of the existing establishment there now that's been brought to our attention.
If I may, make a suggestion. The hearing has not yet been closed. I understand that there may be some additional signatures. My preference would be that we allow both parties to be able to continue to provide petition signatures. And we can do that if we retain the hearing in an open status. What we can do is simply continue this public hearing by motion. We'll leave it open, we'll allow the parties to provide additional information. And then we will set a date for the reconsideration, the, the, the final stage, if you will, of the hearing. Close the hearing at that time if the board is prepared to move forward. But we, what we need to do today is just simply to, a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain and a time certain so that everyone who's here knows when it is the intention of the board to take it up.
Well, what would be our next possible date?
We have a work session on the second and a board meeting on the sixth.
So, May sixth?
I, I would say sixth.
April sixth?
Yeah.
April.
April sixth?
Yes.
Okay. So we would need a motion to continue the public hearing until April the sixth. It'll remain open for the purpose of the parties to be able to provide additional information to Renee. They'll need to get it to the Office of Community Development. If, the hearing will be at nine o'clock AM, right here, same place. Okay? April the sixth.
So.
We would need that as, as a motion.
I have a motion too.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, to, uh, to leave this open till the sixth of April, nine o'clock. Uh, second by Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then in between time, I guess Ray, Renee, um.
You can get us some.
I'll get with you afterwards.
We'll get with you afterwards, yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be nice. Or even a video would be better.
Mr. Marston, is it also for, uh, requests that, that we know what is the status of the existing business at that time?
Yes. Yes, okay.
Especially if some of us don't have a clue what you're talking about, so.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Uh, I guess that completes you, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, moving on, it's Laura Oster, County Administrator.
Thank you. The first thing I have this morning is discussion of possible action to set a spring cleanup week.
Excuse me just a minute. If y'all would like to leave, you're welcome to. Yeah. Thank you all. All right.
It's all right.
They look like they were wanting to, they don't wanna interrupt me. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
This is discussion of possible action to set a spring cleanup week for April the twenty-seventh through, uh, May the second and to be able to advertise in the papers. The reason I bring this up is each year when we do this, we typically do the full week and then Saturday is the hazardous waste collection day. In the past few years, we've had a grant that has taken care of that. It's been a little over, the, the hazardous waste portion has been over ninety thousand dollars. We did not get that grant this year from DEQ. That is a competitive grant, we didn't get it. We do have the portion of the grant that will help mostly with the spring cleanup week. Um, we're a little bit too late, even if it's your choice now, to go ahead and take care of the cost of a hazardous waste day. What we could do is set the spring cleanup week and then in the fall, if I could receive grant funding by that time or if I couldn't, if it was your desire to do it, we could set it for the fall to have a hazardous waste day.
What's it gonna do when they, they're gonna think that? What's it gonna do when you do when they show up with batteries and?
Well, we will advertise and in the advertisement, it will be clearly stated what they cannot burn, which will include those things.
All right.
So Laura, why did we not get the grant?
It, we, each year we apply for a non-competitive and a competitive portion. I don't know. We applied for it as we do every year. We got the regular portion and we did not get the competitive this year. I don't know if it was a lack of funds on their part to go around, um, but we do have an opportunity to apply again. And I will try for it again and maybe by fall we could have some additional money.
Okay. Really?
What you made me do?
So at this time, it's okay, we'll just set the regular spring cleanup week for April the twenty-seventh through May the second and I need, um, permission to advertise in the paper.
Most approve.
Sir.
Most approve, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. The next time I have is approval to enter into a five-year rental agreement with Pitney Bowes, um, for our mailing equipment and authority to execute the documents. It's time for our previous five-year leases coming up. Like a lot of our copiers do, this lease will go down around two hundred dollars, um, per payment.
Okay.
But we'll have the same equipment and everything.
Most approve.
Most approve, Mr. Wilcox?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, any additional business to be discussed?
I have one item and while the sheriff is here, he can, he's, um, we've talked before about the generator at the FEMA sacred. You know, we've talked about how the one that is there doesn't completely, um, make it operational the way that he would like to with the complete heating and air system. So we've gotten some more, uh, we had gotten a, um, schematic basically from A to H earlier that gave us some options. Then I believe that Randy talked to, um, Taylor, which is the one that actually did the electrical installation at the building and has a, a different pricing scenario. So if you wanna explain to him, Brian, second.
Okay. More or less FEMA's gonna reimburse us for ninety-five percent of the difference between what's right, right?
Is.
That's my understanding.
Is it, I know that, that Randy said, that MEMA had said that they would reimburse us for a portion of it, yes.
And I think our portion will be out, it's twenty and nine, does that sound about right?
Yeah, the total reimbursement amount from FEMA is around thirty-three thousand dollars and change. So the difference between the quoted Taylor price of around sixty-three, uh, and the thirty-three would be what is not reimbursed. FEMA, uh, when they, I'm sorry, MEMA, when they look at this, they've already paid their percentage of the existing generator. So they're not go, and it, so it, quote, the building has a generator. So in order to do the deal, they're going to not pay for what they've already paid and in order for us to get the upgraded generator, we need to spend sixty-three thousand dollars on the generator that will run everything and MEMA will reimburse us for ninety-five percent of the difference between the two generator costs.
Well, that doesn't sound like ninety-five percent to me.
Yeah.
We'll try to take, let's take the original generator back.
I am curious as to how we could work it out with Taylor.
Yeah, that's something we have to check on, but that's what I'm saying, so then we'd have another generator if we had another county building.
Well, that's what, I was gonna ask if there was possibility to use that at a different area, another building. Now, would that, what will that generator, what will it, will it actually be able to, say a volunteer fire department or something like, would it run something like that or what's?
Yeah, don't think it's natural gas, it's not diesel gas, like, but it's natural gas.
Right. So you'd have to have a natural gas.
It's candy born, the shop or something like that, something like that.
I'm willing to just try to trade it in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, would it be trade, could they trade it back?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't even know what model it is.
Oops.
Yeah, yeah, I, and one way.
Richard, you're supposed to be going by now.
The difference between the two units.
Well, if you factor in, you factor in the trade-in value and it couldn't have any hours on it, so it's virtually a new generator that's just been sold and probably is not in there.
Right.
Leaving, well.
I, I need to look into the issue of working it out, how, on, on the Taylor side, if they're willing to accept that unit and give us a different price, does that give you heartburn rigid at that point?
Over five thousand still, we got two compared to both.
Yeah, two most.
Is it a, did they provide the first? Yeah. Well, maybe they will take a trade-in then. That'd be nice. All the more luck for Taylor then.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we're aiming in the right direction on that.
So who's gonna take care of that, Sheriff?
I mean, the generator couldn't have many hours on it. So it's virtually brand new used.
Is this additional business time?
Yeah.
So you're gonna bring up, uh, Old Fann Road now?
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the retained.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought you were. Go ahead, you'll bring up. Okay, on additional, additional business, also I think Ms. Johnson and all of us wanted to bring up, uh, Old Fann and Road as far as, um, uh, payment left out there, I believe, to the contractor about MDOT with, between MDOT, contractor, county, et cetera. See what we need to do to resolve this, uh, in what way, whether we need to get everyone together where everybody hears the same thing so we can make, get this payment cleared up.
Uh, Mr. Bishop, I'm gonna defer to you.
Well, I don't have Dick Hall's phone number, so, uh, I think that's where we need to start. Or Buster's told me before the meeting that we were waiting, we've met with, uh, the commissioner and trying to get this resolved and he's worked with us and I, to my knowledge now, Edmund's turned in everything he's turned in and the ball is in their court, so, and it's been there for a couple weeks.
Just rolling kinda slow.
So.
It's, it's slow. Of course, we've been asking since back in the fall for this information and it was turned in to our office, him, the fit, where, and then there's certain things that we have to do and check and feel comfortable with it before we forward it to MDOT, which we did and we have, forwarded it to MDOT. If they happen to agree, whatever, it'll, it'll go away pretty quick. If they don't, we'll have to have some more meetings, but this is not something that has just popped up and, uh, it's not something where the contractor had furnished information months and months ago. Uh, we've been, I won't say begging, but contract, asking for this information and we received it towards MDOT.
Is this also, uh, part of Delta Construction, Delta Constructors too? Is that all part of that intertwined?
So I would say, uh, I would say right now, since we got this information in, it's gone on to MDOT, just give them a little time, a lot of time, but a little time to assess and say if they feel like they're going to agree with it, are they gonna come back and want more information?
So, but we can't, I mean, I don't guess we can, as of the county, we can't, uh, close out the project, is that right, with ongoing?
Close the project out, I mean, there's, because there's still a few months left.
Right. Is that the reason why I, I keep hearing people asking about signage and everything else that's out there? Do we need, I mean, that's still sitting out there? They're wondering why that's all out there and a lot of people think it's complete.
Project, it, it's, it's an active project.
Right.
And, uh, it, it cannot be closed until MDOT tells us they're ready for it.
He, he's gotta have that until we accept that road.
Right.
Right, and that's why.
His liability still exists.
Right.
And so it is still a construction zone even though it's.
Correct.
People running legally split on it. But I remember in the beginning, when Mr. Brown would ask about the paperwork to get the job started and you would submit it and then MDOT would send it back because it was, they had changed the forms and then you would resubmit and during that time, they had changed the forms again. And it went back and forth and there were some finger pointing back and forth and so forth. I just wanna make sure the same thing's not happening now. I mean, if the information that was requested from the contractor has been received, that this is not some kinda stalemate to hold the money, uh, as a retaliatory gesture.
Yeah.
Whoever's holding the money.
Of course, I know it's not the case. Of course, what happens on Old Fann Road is the, we bring it in here, y'all approve and then you get a certain portion of that back from MDOT. And it's a real worsted type thing. But, uh, I'm not aware of, of anyone intentionally holding the project up.
No, I just mean the, the, how the paperwork was in the beginning.
Yes.
With FHWA and MDOT and the county involved in it and there was, you, you bound to recall all the changes that, that, you know, they were, changed the criteria of what the documentation needed to be.
Anyway, that's just for, you should write down, is whether or not, is able to substantiate their kind of, and that's what you mentioned, you know, nobody's unhappy with the work out there. I think the public is reasonably well satisfied.
Very satisfied.
And, uh, we feel good about the way the job's been done, so. I don't think, I just consider it, it doesn't matter getting MDOT sign off on what, so.
Yeah, Greg, the subcontractor, I think, contacted you, also contacted me and, um, I, I tried to explain to him, but he thought it was separate.
Right.
I don't think it is. I think.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda wondering, I, that's what I asked him and he thought it was separate.
Yeah, I, he sees it separate 'cause he's waiting on his check.
Yeah. I understand.
Uh, but I think even after this, we still, from our, our initial meeting, um, I think we're gonna have some overruns coming even after this, so this isn't over.
Oh, yeah, with a lot of the places, they, they, yes, yes. But that's still, with, with being in the, any firms, they're just a lot of small things that need to be finished up and, and our contractors are not particularly interested in doing those small, uh, GLP's and moving on to his request for additional time. Of course, one of the things, if he doesn't get some additional time, he's got some little damage to draw on, and, and that is a situation very close to being real incorrect. I would hold on to that at this time.
Well, I thought, wasn't there a meeting where y'all all collectively got together and you had, and he had his request and everybody was in agreement that, yes, you're owed this time?
At one time, and I will have all the files, but at one time, yes, there was everywhere. We haven't made with MDOT and they said, okay, whatever your engineer says, we will agree with it. And, um, we went home and the contractors submitted some information. We reviewed it and had a major problem, but, um, told MDOT that we would prefer with it and, um, reminded them and they told us that, uh, if, if we went agreement with it, everything was okay. Their response to us, that kind of was, well, we should not have told you that. We moved on from that.
And it wasn't just us agreeing with it, the city of Flowood also is a partner with us on this project, so they agreed with the time also.
They, they apparently changed.
Yeah.
Another form change.
Well, this project's complicated, I, I, I started, don't wanna talk big about MDOT, but they're, they're good, they're good and candid and decided, everybody else. But, uh, this is a fairly large project and a real involved project. It was a project that has basically been in the existing driveway, it's unheard of and it's working out of town. But hopefully, we're getting close to resolving the issue. Mr. Johnson, especially with the eight dollars bringing this up, um, I don't know that, but I do know we finally got the information from the contractor that we've been requesting since back in the fall. We reviewed it and made some comments and forwarded it on MDOT and they've had it probably, I would say, too.
Well, Buster, how long should we wait before we contact someone at MDOT about trying to find out where we are?
I'm gonna say two, three weeks.
Additional?
Yes, because my office will start inquiring with MDOT during that timeframe. Of course, believe me, we're in the closing, that project out because it's, uh, it's as far as my business operation, it is a drain, but I've spent all the money, it's okay, so it's a, it's a direct drain, but that's me to hear the last, that's another issue.
Well, that's a good incentive to get, get it closed out, so appreciate you.
We have a incentive to get it closed out, because every day, it, it is costing.
Right.
Real much to get on time.
And honestly, two weeks is not long when you're dealing with, with them, so, and I don't mean that disrespectful, but they're large.
And let me clarify that, that, uh, my bringing this up today was not intended to cast any stone.
Right.
At the Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, Engineering Service, or Rankin County. I just want the issue resolved.
That's right.
And I understand.
Right.
Well, maybe if you're at the end of your budget on the job, maybe. Well, maybe if you're at the end of your budget on the job, maybe that'll be incentive. Judy, was that a byline that I could hear?
Well, you are surrounded over there. But the sheriff's right there, so you're okay.
My heart bleeds for you.
Alright. Okay. Any, any other discussion on this? Guess we're to the point where we wait a couple of weeks and kind of see how. Keeps updated as we go. Okay.
You feel like this may be resolved by the end of the year?
Any calendar year?
Uh, just, you know, normally your response is, yeah, just don't know what year.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I, I would certainly hope so.
Yeah. Alright.
I'd like, I'd like to set our targets a little closer, maybe have it resolved by the end of the month.
Probably.
That may be useful thinking.
Probably April maybe, but yeah. Closing out, right.
I didn't say what month.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Which month? That's correct. Alright. Any other discussion on this? Any other old business or additional business?
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody knows you're speaking tomorrow. Everybody come out and watch him, uh, give the state of the county address.
Thanks, thanks Jay.
Where, where's that been held?
FEMA.
At the, uh, FEMA?
FEMA building.
Sure is.
What time?
Eleven thirty?
I'll bet.
Yeah. You saw about one. No, eleven thirty. Um, do we have a need executive session?
No, we do.
I always do.
I make a motion, we discuss the need to go in executive session.
I try to help you when you're ready.
Motion, need to go executive session, Mr. Johnson, who made the second?
Hey Renee.
Second, Mr. Wilcox. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? How are you? Good to see you. Roosevelt. Man, what you, I'll tell you back there.
Oh, I need to, I wonder what that was for? Which one is it be? Gavin's second. Yeah, we're meeting with Barcy's side.
Nobody would call.
What's his name?
Hey Dale. I need to ask you a question, sir. Uh, I got a phone call, it's probably our call to you, I forgot about it actually. Don't know if we give a load of it out.
I think I've got a, a plan this morning, I'd like to call you later on. Hey Dr. Burns?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna tell you, I guess, uh, I'll just let you know that.
Everybody's out. He never called you back. We'll probably say, but, no. He said just a load.
Yeah, I know. Believe me, I was out there three weeks ago walking.
Yeah. How are you? Take care. And they probably have. Yeah, what? No doubt. Wow. Hi, Mr. Highsick. We need you.
Highsick, am I on the Highsick?
Always. Depends on, depends on whose point of view it is. Depends on whose point of view it is. We paid him plenty.
He did.
At the time.
At the time? I don't know.
Now, he's run out, he's wanting some more. Yeah, but you want to. I personally, I don't want to wait three weeks, but. No, this seems like it ain't been going on forever, you know?
It's been going on since before the session. When, well, it's been going on.
Six months.
It comes out of money from June.
Where's the district line? His selves aren't getting paid soon. And now they're hurting, sneaking on.
Somebody here. But.
It's kind of like working with the board, isn't it?
I apologize not to listen to that. He has a good, good way of looking out for the future. So you always have a good way of looking out for the future?
Whose future?
Yours. Man, this whole mosquito spraying thing is about to get muddled.
I'm in the wrong business. I need to be in the mosquito business.
Yeah, you did. I think what we fix and find out though, they all start saying was not the right chemical. And, and who at the county, ain't a soul that work for the county, know what chemical does what? You know, at what point we had to go hire a chemist to, you know? Or what do you call mosquito doctors, you know?
Okay. Well, I can go further into that. But I met with that guy on the mosquito control.
Oh, you did?
He came down shop.
Well, I saw he was here.
Executive session.
Not yet.
No, we're not yet. We have a need to go in executive session.
Okay.
I make a motion, we need to go in executive session, discuss personnel.
Second. Okay, motion, Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Keith, go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?